Okay, since PM, I call speaking to order, please rise and join in the. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. To the government from which it stands, where it is. You can call the Trump's name on and please respond with the I for your tenants, trustee Lancaster.
Hi.
Trustee Grant Meyer is excused, trustee heavy, hi. Phil's trustman, I. Trustee Field.
Hi.
Trustee Baldwin.
Hi.
Alright, so we do have a forum, uh next item off is item four. Dedication of potential compost venture. Anyone on the board have any issues with a conflict in tonight's agenda? Uh please identify that if not, we'll move on to the next item, which is correspondence or communication from board and staff. If there's none, I. Trustee Lancaster.
I just wanna thank Craig for the research, Dr. Glove, for coming to me at the intended tonight, so thanks, Craig, for coming.
Um, I just wanna let the board know that I attended the Northeast Central Policy uh meeting um after the. Groundbreaking on Thursday and. The state DOT is nuts. Uh cooperating with. Changing KK from a minor artery to a principal arterial um. One of the reasons why is the state DOT has strict guideline as far as how they identify. Major and minor arterial wounds. And one of the things that they said was KK is. Got a lot of residential, which I vehemently dis- disagreed with their guidelines because residential. Is rated lowest on your priority list, so um. I just wanna let the board know that we will be discussing this again in the next meeting in October, I've been. Pretty much. Talking with Appleton, um Buchanan, Connor. Um, what we call me, they seem to be on board. There's a representative from Charlie McCollum that disagrees with it and. Uh state DOT is is not agreeing to it, so more to come on this, and the reason why I'm very adamant about this, because everyone knows KK is. The principal artery for the village of Harrison. And this is what I was trying to explain to the state DOT, I get your guidelines, but. The reality is, is everyone in Harrison has to travel on KK at least once or twice a day. I don't know, it is the only way on and off of the interstate system, so. I'm gonna continue to fight for changing KK from a minor artery to a major principal territory road, so we can. Actually score higher for future funding when it comes to local projects for KK, so um let's see if we have. Comment with. Trustee then have to.
Yes, I'd like to thank staff and your group for installing the basketball. Rims and the new backboards and nets at the Derby Community Park, you know, it's been a lot of summer, so. You know, both words will fall here this evening, so you guys did a good job, so maybe next year we can maybe have it on a checklist, you know, some something to rip down, we get, you know.
Sure is in place for when they come.
Yeah, but I think with the with the camera edition next week, that will help with some of the. Issues we've had with the teardown in the past, you know, and like I said, I think it's this Derby Community Park is a is a. Corner zone of our parks for the village of Harrison, and we're supposed to keep up those courts because there's so many people that claim, you know, day to day, we go with it a lot by lot, so thanks again and.
Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you, I just wanted to go back to what you were saying about your attendance at the meeting, where's this study, what does what the DOT said, you have to say again, this one, you know?
So that was what we had approved at a prior meeting, which was um. Can't remember what the grant was, but it was a.
It was a safe routes for all of the viewer contributing twenty eight thousand, we have not, that was submitted, but we have not heard anything, but I don't think. It's gonna be, they think it's gonna be four to six months, because it was a national competition, so they're looking at projects across the nation, so it's gonna be.
That's basically what I'm, this is what the DOT is, that doesn't have any impact on the study going forward, correct?
So it's funny you mention that because they were like, oh, it doesn't really matter, what KK's label is still gonna give them funding, you know, like, well, then why are you resisting? Changing the label, because it's important to, you know, the people in Harrison, so. We had a good conversation that was, it was fun to go back and forth, I really think this state DOT needs to update their guidelines and. Take into account road uh or traffic count before land usage, that's just what my opinion is, so. Any other comments? Staff, anything? No? Okay, moving on to corrections and approval of previous meeting minutes, looks like we have the July. Twentieth, twenty twenty five, listening session, meeting minutes. Looking for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve meeting minutes on the listening session on July twenty third.
So you got a motion by trustee Baldwin. Sorry, in a second, my trustee deal. Any discussion? If not, are we ready for voting? Motion was approved unanimously, next up, we have the July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes, confirm motion in a second. Trustee Ben Happy.
Yes, I can make a motion to approve the July twenty twenty five meeting minutes, stretching and circling.
So we have a motion, trustee happy.
I'll second.
We have a second, trustee Baldwin, any discussion? If not, go ahead and forge a ballot. And the motion passes unanimously, next up, we have public comments. Anybody who will arrive late, um the sign up sheet's right here, if you haven't signed up and want to speak, you can come up now if you still choose. If not, um we will move on to the next item, which is. The presentation on the twenty twenty five tax incremental district analysis by Adam Coolchell from there. Did I say your name right?
Ah, you're close enough, it's Rico, but I think it was.
Alright.
So, yeah, it's out, you know. Welcome to the meeting, everybody, it's nice to see you, great, it's been awesome to sit down here, but uh one of the things that I've been working kind of with the staff on is kind of putting together. What you have in front of you here, which is the tax district analysis report. Um and what this hopefully is gonna be able to do for you is kind of have a tool to showcase. Uh there are all of your existing tax districts that are kind of performing, uh what's going on with them? And then kind of keeping mind some of the things that you do as far as the statute requirements. Uh to consider in the future, because obviously with most of your TIFs, they have at least a twenty year shelf life. Uh so there's about fifteen years to take on expenditures, and then kind of looking at, you know, some deadlines as far as when you continue to do expenditures, when you can't. Uh so what this kind of report hopefully will be for you, as it continues to kind of evolve year over year, um is showing you, you know, are you hitting kind of those targets that you have in the project plan? Are there other things that you kind of wanna look at, what are some other possibilities uh that will make sense, you know, where are you in regards to the twelve percent? Uh what other tip districts would you want to look at creating, what other tip districts potentially would you wanna look at closing, so that's kind of the goal behind this document. And I know there's a lot of information in this thing, so I do not expect that you're gonna be experts by the end of this, or kind of know what's going on. Uh so really, the point is to kind of give you the highlights of what's in here, allow you some opportunity to kind of review this, and then if you have any kind of questions or things that you'd like to discuss further. Obviously, then you can get in contact with Chad and Melissa, they'll obviously get in contact with me. Uh and then we'll look at kind of putting whatever else you'd like to see here, because the goal obviously is this is your documents, so as we go forward from year to year. We wanna know if there's things you'd like to see as far as different projections, um typically, what we do is, we've done this for other municipalities, when we kind of do this either. Every year or every couple of years, depending on what kind of what your flavor is, uh we'll look at, you know, okay, well, what was the performance that's showing, when we originally started this, what are they showing now? I'm trying to give you a little bit of a history there, so, so sort of page one, we just kind of talk about the executive summary. Uh to give you a little information of what's going on, so as you can see here, you have a total of six current active tax increment financing districts. Uh they're kind of all over the place, we'll go through every kind of every single one here, um one of the things, obviously, that is a big highlight here is with all of your districts so far as of twenty twenty five. You have a total of two hundred seventy million dollars of equalized value that essentially has been created by using tax increment financing. Uh that's exactly what the tool is supposed to be doing for, it's an economic development tool, it's the number one economic development tool that you have in your tool belt, and that's really what it's supposed to be doing. Um so obviously, tip number one. Is one of your kind of lots are performing, so overall, since it was created in two thousand thirteen, um it's seen inherent value growth over a hundred and two million dollars, or essentially a hundred and thirty one percent increase uh from base value. Tip number two is seen about forty one million dollars of increment growth, about nine point three percent. Tip number four is another one of kind of your rock star tips, where you've seen over a hundred and thirteen million in increment growth for two hundred sixty percent increase over the value. Uh tip number six is one of your newer ones, so that one's only seen about one point eight. Tip number three is one where there was an issue with the assessment and kind of changing that, so there was one year that essentially occurred. Where the assessment dropped it down a little bit, and now it's gone back down, so in twenty twenty five, the districts on increment value growth of about twelve ninety dollars. For about sixty two point eight five percent, and tip number five is the only district right now that does not have an increment value that is generated. Uh tip number two, you have recently had two amendments that have occurred to your kids, so tip number two was recently amended in twenty twenty four. To add about twenty two acres uh to the territory boundary in approximately four point nine million dollars of projects. Tip number five was amended on June twentieth in twenty twenty four to add twenty acres to the territory boundary and to add approximately four point five million in total project cost in this. So then on page two, what we do is just kind of give you a summary of tax increment financing and tax increment districts in general. Uh one of the things you're gonna notice is there are going to be challenges, so depending on the age of your TIF. You know, there have been things that have occurred, everybody remembers in two thousand eight, there was a housing crisis, that obviously had an impact on TIF. One of the other things that occurs as well is when taxing from financing, a lot of the rules and regulations change every year. Uh there are some legislatures that are literally proactive, and there are some legislatures that are really anti-TIF. So there tends to be kind of a constant ping ponging back and forth of things that they wanna see different, when they make those changes, they essentially can have an impact. Uh on what's going on in those tax district districts, and then causes them to have to either change something or get reactionary, there's an entire section within this uh. Report that kind of shows you all of the law changes that have occurred in in the last history, and kind of also slated getting to that a little bit. But then just again, tax increment financing is an economic development tool available in Wisconsin communities. Uh the community administers the tax increment district, however, all taxes overlapping the TIF benefit from improvements of the TIF. That it fosters, so just to remember, when you create a tax increment district, what happens is, imagine you have a square and that's your boundary. All of the taxes that essentially are generated in new development in that square. Instead of going to all of the tax jurisdictions, so whether your school district, your technical college, your county, and obviously you as a village. Go into what is called the TIF, and so you're able to utilize that new tax growth then to fund projects, so whether that means developer incentives, whether that means you're talking about loans. Uh those are all the things that are able to be done, kind of done differently than TIF, and so instead of just having the villagers taxing ability, you get all of the tax jurisdictions and are able to see that project. Number one thing with TIFs is you have to satisfy what's called a but for test, so really but for the creation of that district, but for doing this, that project is very unlikely that it's going to occur. So again, this kind of gives you some information relations to that. Then when we get to page three, what we start doing then is showing you all the different tax increment districts that you have, so these are all the maps that are pulled out of the project plan, showing you tax increment district number one, tax increment district number two. Three and four. And then five is five and six. And so then what we do, starting on page six, we kind of get into the individual needs of each one of your tax increment districts. And what you're gonna see here is from kind of every single tip that you have, this report kind of does the same thing for each of them, um each individual section, so the first thing that we do. Is we start off by showing you the actual boundary of the TIF, so you can see here is the map that's in your project plan. Um and then we give you a little bit of a description, so tip number one is in the western portion of the village, it was created in two thousand thirteen as a mixed use district. Uh so the western portion of the village at the northwest corner of Highway ten and one fourteen and County LP. Uh tip number one included approximately a hundred and forty acres of land, which included several different property owners and a few existing homes and businesses. It was created to fund necessary infrastructure improvements to allow uncertain development, attract business, other development that would provide desired value. And help advance recreational goals, connecting the village trail system to the regional network to provide alternative transportation access to business and development, that's pulled directly from their project plans. So then we go to page seven, what we do then for each of your tax increment districts is provide you with summary. So what you can see here is it provides the location, it shows the type of use, so tip number one is a mixed use district. It lists all the projects that were within the project plan, so you can see here there was some property acquisition possibilities, right of way easement. Um site preparation, sanitary sewer, water, stormwater system improvements, kind of allows the game in there. We then go over some key dates that kind of looked at with each individual districts, so you can see here what was created. Uh the final date to infer to expenditures, so for tip number one, that's eight thirteen and twenty twenty eight. Uh so why that is important is because when you're taxing from in districts, you have an expenditure. So within that period, so for this, you're allowed essentially to business with mixed service, the twenty year shelf life. So essentially, that allows you to take on projects for fifteen years. That deadline comes at eight thirteen twenty twenty eight, so what that means is for the last five years of the district, it's stated that goes in twenty thirty three. Is if you want to fund any project between twenty twenty eight and essentially twenty thirty three. You have to have something either approved by you as the village board, or in some form of a development agreement or contract. By eight thirteen and twenty twenty eight. After that point, you are no longer legally able to take on any additional projects that can be done in tip number one. Uh so you're gonna see when we get to the conclusion section here, that's one of the big kind of highlights we thought about, because this being your oldest tip district. It's the one that's gonna have the first opportunity to kind of have those discussions and figure out what that means, so I'll give that a little bit. What each then kind of summary does here shows there are any project plan amendments that were done. So just to kind of highlight you on that, there are essentially two type of amendments that can be done throughout a fifth district. One are project plan amendments, and that really is, okay, you're adding a project, you're removing a project. Or potentially whatever you have in the original project plan, the cost now due to whatever factor it could be, say, you originally got a million dollars budgeted for infrastructure, but now because of. Project or something else, it's not going to be three before. That's what necessitates a project plan amendment, where you'll go in and kind of update that to get the figures correct. The other thing that you can do in TIF districts are what are called territory amendments. And throughout the life of a district, TIF district, you have four opportunities to essentially do additions, so you could have your boundary, and then all of a sudden, because the TIF district. The neighbors or potential property owner next to it goes, oh, well, I wanna do that around the front of the bell. That's when you do a territory addition, you then would amend your boundary to add to property again. Or it's the opposite, is say you have some property that was in the TIF. That for whatever reason was thought was gonna be developed, but due to wetland issues or something along those lines, it's never going to happen. Well, if that's the case, it probably doesn't make sense for it to be sitting in a tax increment district, get it out of there, and put it back in kind of the general fund for the village. So that's when it sets takes that, so that's what you're gonna see kind of throughout this presentation here, when we're talking about amendments, is that what we're focusing on, is here is the project plan, or essentially it was a territory. So then what we do is provide you kind of a history here of the current your TIF mountain, so it's kind of as we talked about, what's that increment value that you've seen throughout the TIF district? So generally, we're gonna start with the base values, you can see here for tip number one, seven hundred eighty five thousand, and as of twenty twenty five, it's a hundred and three million, so it's definitely seen a lot of growth. And then what we try to do then is project out, okay, what are potential future tax increment that is gonna possibly occur within the district if it goes to full amount of life, and then what are some of those product costs? On page eight then, what we do then is kind of give you a history of the value. So really, what this is doing on page eight is showing you, okay, the actual cumulative value increment versus what was in the project plan, and then kind of shows you how is it doing? Is it, are you occurring the increment that you thought it was going to, or is it less, so as you can see in here, versus actual versus projected, and then when you look at the bottom here, you do a free one. So overall, in twenty twenty five, the project plan is showing you, we're gonna have about thirty two million dollars of value increment, you're actually at a hundred and two billion, so we rolled with seventy million dollars of an actual versus what was in the project plan. That's awesome, you know, that's exactly what TIF is supposed to do, and that means that this TIF district is doing very well. On page nine then, what we do then is give you a summary of the project cost details, so what we did is we essentially went into the project plan and looked at, okay, what was everything that was kind of proposed? When were those dates that you thought that was going to occur, if that was in there, or we tried to estimate it out for you? And then essentially what we do on the bottom here is give you an actual cost section. So you can kind of see how those things are tracking up, now the actual cost section is pulled directly from your audits, and one of the things that you'll notice is generally in the audits. Everything kind of gets combined under conservation and development, so although you may have some debt payments, sometimes your auditor will just put everything under that one amount. Uh so that's not why you're seeing that summarize there. So what we do then off of this is I go to page ten. Which then we try to put together before. So you can see a little in more detail, okay, how things actually shake out between the project plan, between your actual costs, and kind of the revenue, so on page ten. This is where we show you the TIF cash flow performer that then estimates hours, okay, how are things doing? So we went back to kind of the start of two thousand thirteen, and then essentially showing you up to date kind of where things are at with twenty twenty five. Uh so we get this information kind of in column C here of the background data, that comes directly from a department of revenue reports. Uh that shows exactly what those equalized value kind of increases are, and then what we try to do then in the blue is project out, okay, based on your current tax rate. Which as you can see in the yellow here on the top is twelve dollars and sixty nine cents. What potentially is that tax increment that you're gonna be generating, so what we're estimating, if you kind of go along the line here, twenty twenty five. Is that right now the TIF is collecting about a million dollars, is what we're estimating during the year. Um you also then have some investment proceeds, because obviously if you have any money that's sitting in the TIF fund, that's being put into a bank account or savings account, let's do a great job of that. And kind of looking into those things, so we estimate a little bit of investment proceeds, and then we look at some of the other things that have occurred kind of throughout the history, so. If there's been any kind of general revenue that the audit is counting for, any note proceeds, so you did take out bonds to basically pay for something. That's kind of what this is showing. So then on page eleven, we get into kind of some of the projections of future expenditures, so what we look at is we did a history of what did they save the audits, you can see there were some capital outbreak expenses that the audit talked about kind of occurring. In twenty four through twenty nineteen, so there's some debt service that you have, so you have some existing debt service payments here that are slated to kind of continue from twenty twenty five to twenty thirty four. One of the reasons we have the last year in twenty thirty four highlighted in orange is because a lot of times in tax increment districts, because they're only twenty years, and whenever you take up a debt, may exceed that point. So there actually is one year that essentially this debt payment, as you can see, in the last year in twenty thirty four kind of jumps, it goes from a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in twenty thirty three to two hundred and thirty nine. That reason is because we're essentially combining two years of principal interest payments and paying everything off in that last year that it was supposed. Um so then we throw in some other information we've seen from the audits, if there were any transfers that the audit showed, then we're not gonna be going to debt service, that could go in to cover a capital project. Uh and then conservation and development expenses, what we did is we sat down with the staff and asked them, okay, are you aware of any other developer incentives or anything else that kind of is occurring, and what are those payments at? So you can kind of see in the yellow here, that is specifically what that is kind of forecasting for you, is showing there's a developer payment to ask for, and that's remaining above two point three million dollars. And kind of showing over those years when that essentially would be paid. So then in the order section, this is the TIF stats, so what we try to do is look at your audits and try to compare, okay, how is everything shaking out between what the revenues and you come for the expenditures? So what you can see is we've highlighted that yellow number there of seven hundred nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. That comes directly from your audit, so that's showing that as of the end of twenty twenty four, that's essentially what the savings account or how much money is essentially left over in tip number one. Uh that is available for potentially future projects, uh future expenditures, everything else. So then what we try to map out then is, okay, based on all of your expenditures, you see that cost recovery section. If you were to make the decision, could you potentially close a TIF district? Well, what this is showing is by twenty twenty seven, if everything kind of continues to flow with your revenues and expenditures, as your fund balance is gonna build up, it'd be about three million dollars. Well, that then has been open some conversations, is do you potentially look at closing that district early? Or as we talked about, the expenditure period is twenty twenty eight, so that's where then you kind of have a conversation over the next couple of years is start looking at, okay. Within the half mile boundary, you've been talking about roads. Are there any roads that make sense that potentially you would want to use this increment before closing to move those up? You know, over some of the things that we've been talking to Chad and Melissa about, about starting to think with the capital improvement plan, is that if this kind of continues to go the way it is, and you continue to kind of grow that fund balance. That's the opportunity then that you have to look at before you essentially would close the district, um or consider some other items that we'll talk about later. Okay, I know I talked a lot there. That's kind of how this flows, so every single TIF district is kind of gonna do the same thing, so I probably won't go into as much detail, because I know you got a lot of other stuff on your agenda here. But we'll kind of do the same thing, just go through each one, kind of give you the highlights, uh so tip number two, starting on page thirteen here. It's twelve, we've got the map for you, and then the information, so tip number two was created via resolution on one twenty nine twenty nineteen. Uh tip number two is in the northern portion of the village along County KK, between State Park Road and Friendship Road and along Highway fifty five. Uh tip number two included approximately two hundred and twenty two acres of land, which included several different property owners and a few existing home businesses. Tip number two was created to fund the necessary infrastructure improvements to allow certain the plant development mixed use area, which was not feasible without TIF's form. It also was created to help advance recreational goals that connect into those trail systems and the regional network and provide alternatives. It was amended via resolution on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, to add two parcels to the overall TIF boundary and approximately four point nine million dollars additional projects. So then on page thirteen, we get into a little bit of the summary here, so again, you can see the location, this is another mixed use district, all of the different projects that were in there. So here are your key dates to kind of look at, your creation was one twenty nine of twenty nineteen, final date to incur TIF expenditures is twenty thirty four, so we got some time before you have to really start considering about. Looking at some alternatives, but you got a good one, a window there to still do TIF on projects. Um it's anticipated closing date is twenty thirty nine, and then you can see here, there was one amendment that was done, it was a boundary and project cost, so you did a territory amendment. And you also included some new projects in twenty twenty four, and primarily that was for property acquisition, site preparation, utilities, et cetera. So as you can see here, the twenty nineteen base value was about four point seven million dollars, as in twenty twenty five, there's been about forty six million dollars worth of growth, so again, see the line in growth. We're also anticipating about twenty two million dollars possible new increment, along with about fourteen million dollars loss. So on page fourteen here, you can see this again, just kind of shows you the history of the value increment, how it's, you know, benchmarking against the actuals versus your project plans. And what you can see here is based on the project plans, we've got about forty one million dollars worth of growth, we were anticipating about thirty eight, so this TIF district is going to do better than anticipated right now about two point seven million dollars. So then what we do here on page fifteen, that we just talked about, is show you kind of the, so your first version is the, when the project plan was created, that's what you're seeing there in kind of the purple. Then we have the amendment there in kind of green, and then essentially what we're showing then is what is kind of happening with the actual cost then for the lives. So then when we go to page sixteen, we now they try to forecast this out, so what you can see here is kind of in that background data, as we talked about, we call V there, construction increment. What we're showing then is over the actual numbers coming in from the DOR, and then when we get into that green highlighted section, that is directly coming from the project plan, so those are assumptions. And so that, again, as we kind of watch this from year to year, it's possible you may get that increment, it could be more, it could be less, that's just kind of what we're kind of banking this plan off right now, is looking at in those years, that's what we're anticipating kind of development to occur. So as you can see, kind of going into the revenue. What we're showing then is that's the thing, kind of all of these projects kind of finalized, the TIF is gonna be generating about anywhere between one point five and kind of one point peaks. Uh we have a one percent inflation modifier in there, generally, that is very conservative, because. Everybody, most municipalities have seen more of that, our role again is to be conservative, we don't want to overshoot you there. So what we're also showing in there, just like everything else, any transfers that occurred, any kind of things coming from the general fund, kind of no proceeds. Then when we go to seventeen here, we've got the expenditures for tip number two. So what we're showing is there was the anticipation of some future capital project costs to occur, so that's where you can see we have that kind of slated in twenty thirty to twenty thirty nine. Uh there is some existing debt service that is kind of occurring right now from twenty twenty five to twenty thirty four, again, some general government expenses that are kind of estimated. And that's some conservation and development, which is really relating to us, there's some developer incentives uh that could be given in relationship to projects there. So what you can see here in the TIF status is right now tip number two is in. So what you can see here, the TIP status is right now, tip number two is in a negative status, it's about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That was anticipated, uh, that is very common that when you start TIP districts and you do projects, you can see there in twenty twenty four, you did about a million dollars worth of capital projects. To kind of help some of those future developments that are occurring, that's how TIP districts work. They kind of start in the red, they get some support, and then eventually what we're showing here, if everything kind of pans out the way we're showing. By about twenty thirty four is when essentially we can start having some conversations about what makes sense. Because that's when you have your expenditures recovered. So we could either look at, okay, can we pay off all the debt, look at closing things? That's right around when we talked about the expenditure period, so that gives us here opportunity to talk about some future project costs, uh, so that's what's going on there. All right, tip number three. So tip number three is located in the northwestern portion of the village. Um, it's dotted by Midway Road, County Road EP to the north, North Coop Road on the east, Manchurian Road on the south, and the future Eisenhower Drive in west. Was created via a resolution on seven fourteen of twenty twenty. Uh, contains approximately seventy nine acres. It was created as a mixed use district with the purpose of advancing the village's vision to achieve well planned and high quality growth. Economic diversification and development are prominent locations built up. And according to the construction of a new road directing the ends of Eisenhower Drive, the Midway Road hung where we keep. US ten and fourteen, the project intends to provide traffic connections to and from proposed development and create a regional transportation network. Development of the provisions, this would be in the district. So then kind of the summary page here on nineteen, shows you again the location, this is also a mixed use district that is primarily what the TIPs are. Uh, we have the projects that are in there, again, the key dates that you want to kind of look at here, it was created in twenty twenty. So essentially you've got fifteen years to incur projects, that's which you had twenty thirty five, and then it's anticipated to close in twenty twenty four. Right now has not had any project plan or territory amendments. So you can kind of see what's happening here, um, in twenty twenty, the base was a hundred and ninety three, five hundred. You can see what happened there in twenty twenty four and had a, a, a center correction where they backed out some of the work that they did or they were coming for. But then in twenty twenty five, it came back. So you can see they did some, we were at about ten million, you dropped back down to one hundred and ninety three, now you're back up to twelve point three million. So what we're showing then are some future project increment of about six point eight million dollars, so future project costs of about four million dollars. And then this kind of shows you that on page twenty, um, how things are shaking out. So this is one where the actuals are showing about twelve million, the project showed, project plan shows to be about twenty two. So it is a little bit behind, but again, that is definitely going to catch up. Uh, so what we do then is kind of show then on page twenty one, your project cost details. What was in the original project plan, what's essentially shown is the actual cost. And then we give you a little bit better breakout of that starting even before that. So as you can see here at twenty two. Uh, what we have is in that B section, construction increment, we've got a lot of green there showing some anticipated projects. So in talking with the staff, those are the ones that are in the project plan and anticipated kind of curve starting in twenty twenty five. And going all the way to twenty thirty one, uh, that is the maturity of the increment. So what we're showing here is if all of that kind of construction increment does occur. What we're showing is that it's gonna cap out roughly about four hundred and ninety, get to a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars as the district kind of comes to a close. And then when we talk about expenditures on page twenty three. What we have in here is some hypothetical future debt, uh, so that's column H here, you can see kind of in the orange. What that is estimating is essentially about two point five million dollar issuance at about four point seven five percent. To cover projects that would be the North Coop Road, Midway Road, and then portions of Manchurian Eisenhower. Um, in green, that's the general governing expenses, that's coming directly from the project plan. And then what you can see here in the conservation and development expenses, we've got the yellow. That's estimating the remaining developer incentive payments that need to be done for developer agreements. So when we talk about the TIP stats in orange, you can see there we've highlighted the one fifty seven, nine fifty seven. So that's for the twenty twenty four audit, so this TIP is in a positive position. And we're showing essentially by twenty thirty five, right when we get to that kind of end of the expenditure period. Uh, there could be some possible discussions then about if it makes sense to close it early, pay those things off, or look at some other projects that, you know, everybody needs to develop. All right, tip number four. So this is County eighteen at Lake Park Road. So tip number four was created via a resolution on nineteen of twenty twenty. And it is in the northwestern portion of the village, along with the west side of Lake Park Road and bisected by Midway Road County EP. Uh, it's approximately a hundred and twenty two acres of land, there are four different property owners and two existing homes within the district. Uh, the project plan included upgrades to pedestrian recreational trail facilities, road improvements, utility improvements. Land acquisition, developer incentives, and general admission and financing costs. Uh, the district is actually in the lab approximately seventy four million dollars of tax increment was estimated to be closed in twenty. So then on page twenty five, we get into kind of summary for you. So here again, it's a mixed use district showing all the projects. The key dates to kind of look at is it was created in twenty twenty, so essentially you've got fifteen years, this one also would be twenty thirty five, closing in twenty forty. Uh, it currently has not had many private plan amendments at this point. Uh, this is another one of kind of your rock stars, so as you can see here, in twenty twenty, base value is four hundred and forty thousand. And in less than five years, it's now a hundred and thirteen million. Um, that is incredible for a TIP district, so very nice job by the staff and everybody who's done that. As you can see, for future new increment, we've got about twenty million dollars that's projected, uh, definitely about twelve million dollars project cost. And then again, on twenty six, we've got to do the comparison, okay, well, how is the actuals looking versus the projected? Uh, again, because this TIP district is doing very well, it's actually showing about forty two million dollars over the projections, uh, that were in the project plan as of twenty twenty five. On page one of seven then, we get you kind of into the project costs again, so you can see here all the project costs that were shown in tip number four. The actual costs that are there, and then we kind of break everything out or in the performance. So as you can see here on page twenty eight. What we're showing is in twenty twenty eight, come through twenty thirty two, there is some small development we're expecting to occur, about five million dollars there. Uh, so essentially what we're showing is mostly this TIP district is gonna generate about one point five million dollars. And then with inflation potentially will get you to about one point eight, uh, there's some investment proceeds in there. And then going to page twenty nine, you can see clearly what are the expenditures that are in here, so. Right now, we've got about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that potentially is going to recur in a capital only project in twenty twenty eight. And then essentially with conservation and development, that really is the estimated remaining amount of developer incentive payments that you're going to be doing. So what this is showing when we get to the status, as you can see, is the highlighted number right now for twenty twenty four audit. This TIP has about a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars in savings that are currently there. Uh, we're anticipating that is expected to grow every year. So again, right when you get to that twenty thirty five window, there's gonna be the same conversation, so we'll be having some of the other issues there. Tip number five. Is County Road N and Manchurian Road. Uh, so this one was created via a resolution on eleven fifteen of twenty twenty two, and is located along the east side of County Road N, north of Manchurian Road. Uh, tip number five is includes approximately forty acres of land, is graded to attract some finan- financial incentives. Business and other development that will provide desired value, employment opportunities and aesthetic qualities. Uh, tip number five was amended on June twentieth, twenty twenty four, included additional twenty acres to the district. For approximately a grand total of sixty acres and then approximately four point five million potential project costs. So again, tip number five is a mixed use district, uh, so you can see all the projects that are there, so the key dates to kind of look at for this one. It was created in twenty twenty two, the final date to include TIP expenditures is twenty thirty seven. Uh, the anticipated closing date would be twenty forty three, you have had one amendment, so there are three that are still available as far as territory wise. Uh, it was about already project costs, so we added in some additional infrastructure, land acquisitions and finance costs. And this is the one you can see that basically right now is not seeing really increase in the list value. So that was a lot of the conversation during the event of last year, trying to kickstart some other projects to occur. So what we're showing is we've got an estimate of both future new acreage of about ten million dollars, future progress cost of about eight one five. So you can see here, again, looking at kind of the history of the value increment. Um, overall, it's currently showing a negative value, which is the original value we're down to ten. What was projected was about one point eight, and now with the amendment, we're hoping is that eventually you're gonna see about sixteen million. So our anticipation or hope would be that coming in the next couple of years here, we'll start to see some of that evening down until that off. So on this page here, thirty three, you have some project costs, so here are the original project costs that were in there. Uh, then what we do is provide you with the amendments, so you can kind of see what is happening there. And then we showcase overall, the ones currently, well, this district was just recently created, so there's not too much overall actual history. So then we try to go to the performa and showcase what we're planning. So as you can see here, with the amendment that you did last year, what was anticipated is that kind of started in twenty twenty five. And then going down to the twenty twenty nines, where you're gonna see the majority of this, about forty three million dollars potential construction value. What that's going to do then is if your tax rate kind of stays relatively where it is. You're gonna be looking at about six hundred thousand dollars increment, uh, and then it kind of stays there with that one percent estimate. When we look then at page thirty five, as far as the potential expenditures that are out there, I mean, you can see a lot of this is based on the project plan, so. There's some type of projects that are slated to kind of occur from twenty thirty five to twenty forty three. Uh, then again, you've got some existing future debt service that has been layered in here, some general government expenses. And then again, the conservation development expenses, which is the estimated remaining developer incentive payments, uh, that are really there. So I have them right now for twenty twenty four audit, the TIP is in a negative position. But that's essentially why the amendment was done, kind of looking at these projects. Again, a lot of this is estimated future, so when we get to that point, that potentially would be taken on debt. We'll kind of look at that, because as you can see, there are some negative values there in the status that we kind of want to monitor and look at to see what will make the most sense. Like, because otherwise you're gonna have to have some support from some other fund in order to kind of cover those costs if you would take them off. Um, but what we're showing is that overall, this TIP district is slated. When it gets to kind of those last couple of years, that potentially the expenditures will be recovered. Uh, and then you'll be able to influence the district obviously in a positive position. All right, tip number six. So this is County Road N and County Road KK, uh, so tip number six was created via a resolution on three twenty eight of two thousand and three. Uh, the mixed use district is in the north central part of the village, the southwest corner of the intersection of County Road N and County Road KK. Uh, tip number six includes approximately four point one acres of land and was created to fund the necessary infrastructure improvements. Such as storm sewer relocation and the creation of a storm water pond to allow us to deploy a development. As well as attract through financial incentives, business and other development that can provide desired value, employment opportunities and aesthetic qualities. So again, tip number six here, summarize it up, it is a mixed use district. It was created in twenty two thousand and three, so the final date to incur TIP expenses is twenty thirty eight. Uh, the anticipated closing date is twenty forty four, uh, you've got no amendments, since this is relative new. And you can see the base value is about five hundred and sixty two thousand, it's a little over a million, so it has some growth. Uh, there's some future new increment projected for about two million dollars, and some future project costs of about two million there. So what you can see here is it was created in twenty twenty three. It has not necessarily seen the development that it was slated for, but you're talking to staff, that is definitely something that they're looking forward into the future that they will be occurring. And it's kind of overplanted. Uh, so again, you tip number six here on thirty nine, you can see the project cost detail that shows all the projects that were slated. Primarily, they were storm sewer, uh, retention, site preparation, storm water ponds, that kind of stuff. Uh, and again, because this is so new, really only things that you've seen are some conservation and development expenses. And so what we've done is modeled that out here in the performa. So starting on page forty, you can see what we're showing is that the majority of the development we have slated to occur kind of this year. And then occurring over the next three years, you have about eight million dollars total. Uh, that's gonna generate about roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars increment once it kind of gets finalized, and then overall about two million dollars increment. And then when we look at particularly the performa, again, this is very common that we see this, this TIP district has only really been in effect for two years. So it's not uncommon, I don't want anybody freaking out when they see kind of the TIP status column and see all that red. Don't get scared, that, that happens. Uh, this is all planned out, we kind of look at that, so right now it's very common that within your second year, your TIP is in a negative position, you can see it's at two hundred and sixty one thousand. That's because it takes money in order to kind of get it up and running, to get those projects going. Uh, but what we're showing is slating that about one million dollars is slated to occur in projects in twenty twenty eight. Uh, we've got some general government expenses that are basically slated there in regards to the project plan. And then there, we've got some developer incentives that essentially are slated to occur. Uh, so right now, you know, what this is showing, it is showing that it would take pretty much the entire district lifespan in order to cover it. That's very common when we're talking the first few years, and then as that, you know, construction increment, projects kind of go. Uh, potentially then we see that change as well, that's kind of when we have new increment and tax rates changes, what's going on there. So what we do then on page forty two is kind of start talking about summing everything up. Uh, so we talked literally overall about your overall district, so as you can see. Uh, TIP is a big tool that you have used, and you can see it has been very positive in a lot of your TIP districts. With one, with four, uh, they are exceeding the expectations. And the other ones are bringing in projects that, again, the whole point of this is without doing this, you would not be seeing these occur. Uh, so again, tip number one is generated over a hundred and two million in increment, tip number two is generated in forty one. Tip number three is kind of on its way now, generating twelve million, tip number four is a hundred and thirteen. And again, tip six and five are so new, uh, those numbers are going to be relatively a little less disappointing. So then what we'd like to do at page forty three here is we talk about kind of the project plan. Uh, and so one of the things obviously that impacts the project plan as we talk about are legislative changes in laws. So I'm not gonna go through everything here, but if you have some free time and you really want to read about tips, you can go nuts here and look at all the different law changes that have occurred. But literally from twenty thirteen to now, you can see, kind of going through page forty three, forty five, and forty seven. Um, all the way to basically page fifty one, all of the changes that have occurred. And a lot of these were looking at things where, you know, again, you had a legislator that felt the TIP in their district was not doing what it was supposed to. So they wanted broketches on it, they did that, it potentially had an impact, things changed. Or they wanted to try to make sure that development was occurring in the right ways. So you can kind of see all those different changes. One of them that occurred, you know, kind of giving you an example, is it also does blame and attack when you get additional revenue that you weren't expecting. So for instance, what happened in two thousand thirteen is an example, it's technical colleges, so one of the junior board members, and that makes up that total tax rate. They got an influx of money from the state. Well, what that did was essentially dropped all of their tax rates. While in TIP districts are dependent on kind of a status old tax rate, or that's kind of how you project this. So when they saw that reduction, it caused a lot of tax increment districts to go. You were expecting that it was gonna be here, we were using that for this project, we were using that for this, and some of the, now their TIP district kind of looks, it's not gonna do so well. So what they allowed you essentially TIP districts to do is if you could prove that it was impacted by that, you essentially could get an extension, you were allowed a three year extension. Uh, so a lot of these law changes kind of played into that, they looked at essentially with the housing market crisis that occurred in two thousand and eight. There were some TIP districts that needed extensions, so those are all things that are kind of tools in the tool belt that we can talk about. We're continuing to work with the staff and kind of monitoring, okay, this is not exactly looking the way we thought it was. We need to start talking about that and talking about, okay, what are some options that are available to us in the village, uh, to try to mitigate that. So as of right now, there's currently no legislative talks on the table, but there have been three that have kind of been going around, so I just kind of wanted to educate you on what those are. Um, so the first one is right now, the law as it currently stands is you are not allowed to have more than twelve percent of equalized value growth. In TIP districts. So there's a report that's done by the DOR every year that essentially shows, okay, where are you in regards to being under the twelve percent requirement? While due to a lot of municipalities having TIP districts that performed really well, they exceeded that twelve percent propensity. So there has been some conversation about allowing a. Either change where they may change that percentage to allow it to be more fifteen percent or sixteen percent. Again, understanding that TIP districts are the number one tool that municipalities have, uh, there's been a lot of questions to do that. Nothing has come through yet, but that is the vision or conversation we kind of hear from the legislature. Uh, through the conversations with the league of municipalities and other places, that that could potentially change.
So would, so would that be due to the increased property values?
That's also a part of it as well, yes, is just within the last few years, and you've all seen it, the values have skyrocketed. So when they're doing that equalized valuation, it's just, you know, they did not anticipate that it would go that far. So if you look at that report, there are some municipalities that maybe we have like one TIP district, but just because of that value, their percentage is still me per fact. So what they're trying to do is give, you know, they don't want to open a can of worms and say, no. We're just gonna let everybody do everything, but they're trying to figure out that sweet spot. So I'm pretty confident that, I've heard that now for the last couple of years, so that one seems to be something that might actually turn in one.
So won't they just add more projects to the ten?
But yeah, it's, it's intense, so. Yeah, they kind of want to keep it at that camp. The other one is then the thirty five percent newly planted residential, so this does pertain to mixed use districts. So mixed use districts are the only district that you essentially are allowed to do residential development. Um, so it's kind of counterintuitive when all you hear about is housing crises and people can't, your homes. Why are we capping then the percentage that you can use to create newly planted residential? So the definition by the DOR for what newly planted residential is, the best way to think about this, is take a vacant piece of farmland that currently is being farmed. Now you have a developer that comes in and wants to develop that, and they're gonna create a brand new plant, they're gonna create, you know, brand, and it has to change the zone. That is newly planted residential. It's not, you know, your current single family subdivisions that either, and you guys are in a little bit of a different situation because you're doing well on the residential side. Uh, but there is a push now to allow for you to be able to have more than that, just because the conversation has been that we need more housing, so. That's one that's kind of being talked about. And then the last one is TIP closing procedures. Um, so one of the things that used to be a benefit for TIPs is when you close a TIP district. You would get a one time ability to have a bump in your levy limit worksheet or your levy. And so you used to be able to do a fifty percent one time bump of the increment that you essentially closed. While now what they did is they essentially changed it as part of Act twelve, it's now you get ten percent. And then if you actually close early, then you possibly get the ability to get an additional fifteen, which is a twenty five. Um, there's been a lot of kind of pushback on that, that they want to go back to the way it was, because again, that's a tool over. And the main reason for that is you as the municipality are the one taxing jurisdiction that essentially is taking on a majority of the risk because of the. And the main reason for that is you as the municipality are the one taxing jurisdiction that essentially is taking on the majority of the risk because of the TIP district does close in the red. You are the one that then takes on that native balance and apples on the taxing jurisdictions. So the original thought process was well, because you're taking on the risk. You should get an added incentive essentially when you close it because of all the work that was done by your staff, by you and everything. So. That's the other one that potentially we'll see where that goes. So then just kind of closing everything up. So what this kind of tool, this tool shows you here is things to kind of think about into the future. So. Again, number one is significant development and redevelopment has been fostered using the chase. You can see that the benefit of the taxing registered concerns beyond the growth in tax base. Um, Harrison, both the elected and the appointed officials have done a great job of kind of monitoring and looking at all things related to tax increment districts. So what this does is kind of just summarizes for you each of the two districts. So it's an easy way to look at what are things to look at in the future. So team number one is probably the one really that is the closest to having some future conversations, just because it's the oldest one that you have. So the main things you could potentially be looking at in the future is you could close it as early as twenty twenty seven. So that's something that we could potentially look at and monitor, uh, when the maximum like is twenty fifty three. So potentially that'll get it back on the tax bill earlier, reduce your twelve percent, things like that. We're going to talk a little bit about affordable housing extension. I know it's a scary word, but we'll talk about what that means and kind of what you can do with that. And then we're also going to discuss again, this one, their expenditure period closes in twenty twenty eight. So there's the possibility to look at the addition of possible projects within the TID and the half mile radius. So really taking your capital improvement plan. And sitting down with the staff and obviously you can kind of monitoring, okay, let's game plan this out. If you have a excess revenue of two million dollars sitting there. What could you use that for? That's in your C I P list that instead of having to go and borrow, potentially the half mile radius allows you to do that. Uh, so those are the things really that I think are tip number one. That's probably your top. What I don't kind of think about here in the next couple of years is really start to work with you to kind of look at, okay, what makes sense? What could we do? The other ones are kind of later on, but it's all going to be the same conversation. So as you can see here, when you get to twenty thirty five, this is really the conversation for two and three. It's going to be looking at closing it early, talking about the affordable housing extension. You know, potentially looking at, uh, the expenditure periods which end in twenty thirty four and twenty thirty five. On page fifty four then, four, five and six, four is kind of in the same boat. That one's about twenty thirty five. So basically you've got. Two, three and four kind of all are slated in that same timeframe. And then five and six really are kind of the later ones where you'll be looking at kind of the affordable housing extension, um, and then potentially looking at that. All right. So page fifty five. So let's talk a little bit about what the affordable housing extension is and what that means. So if you have an active TIF district, what you are able to do is if it gets to the point where essentially you have. Paid off all of your project costs. So you have everything slated. There's no longer any payments that need to be made or anything else. You have a opportunity that can be discussed. And again, you don't have to do this. It's entirely up to kind of the board. Um, but this is what the affordable housing extension wants you to do. Is it is a resolution that would have to be passed and at this point in time, it's a resolution that just has to be passed by you. There is some conversation that that might change. So right now you don't have to go through the joint review work process. It's literally you guys make the decision and it happens. You submit it to D O R. So what happens is once you get to that point where you realize, okay, all of our project costs that occurred to where we are. And you're within the, what is called the lifetime period. So for tip number one, we talked about that. You've got essentially, I believe it was twenty thirty two. So before twenty thirty two, you have the ability to essentially look at if you would want to extend the district for one year. What it allows you to do is essentially that one year you're extending it. The tax increment that comes in, you are able to capture and put into a special revenue fund. And seventy five percent of it has to be spent on what they consider formal housing. Twenty five percent of it can go to whatever you want. So that can be, you know, what a lot of municipalities are doing is that twenty five percent is going to their C I P to fund roads, to fund equipment, those type of things. And then the seventy five percent they're keeping in a special revenue fund for affordable house. So now the question comes to, okay, what is affordable housing and what is that? So on page fifty six here, I pulled the information directly from the Department of Revenue's website. On what they defined it as. So state law defines affordable housing as housing that costs a household no more than thirty percent of the household's gross monthly income. Example, for a household earning nine hundred dollars per month, housing must cost two hundred and seventy dollars or less to be considered affordable. So what you can see here is there is a, that's a huge way to what that could be. So generally in our work, we've had a lot of conversations through, I think I saw your attorney said, oh, there, yep, he's over there. So that's where this kind of goes to is, uh, when you ask the D O R, what can we use it for? They're going to tell you, well, ask your attorney. What is your attorney who? So here's what I can tell you that municipalities have. So when I was in Plaidville as the city manager, we extended one of our TIF districts for a year. And essentially one of the things we wanted to target is for us, we were a mining town. We had a lot of older homes. So we essentially created grant programs that could be for beautification to help those homeowners out. So if there was a home that was built nineteen fifty or less, um, they essentially could apply, you know, they were due the, they were due the, they were missed. They would submit it to us. We then would pay them a certain amount based on that. Uh, that's one option. The other thing now for you guys, you're in a bit of a different situation. So what could you use that one for? What we've seen a lot of municipalities look at, particularly with affordable housing is more towards the senior end of the spectrum. Is how can you, you know, create affordable housing for seniors that you want to create that trying? You want the people to come in here, they're, you know, either living in their apartment first and then they find that home that they want. And then the question is when they leave that home, where do they go? You know, that's the question of where we've seen a lot of people do that, where they have allowed. Infrastructure assistance to help keep the cost out. We've allowed, we've seen it where it's grant programs where essentially they've given money to developers. It says. Okay, if it's somebody who's over fifty five or above, you're going to allow a reduction in the cost of that gap. Of essentially this is where you're charging it. You want to see here, um, those are some of the things that you can look at. So. So again, it really runs the gamut. It can go to infrastructure. It can go to land, essentially acquisition that essentially then could be used for development. Uh, it's really a lot of the conversation of, again, there is not a. Currently, right now, there is not a requirement. There is no TIP affordable housing police. Um, my assumption, I both agree with this, that's probably going to change is that we're going to have that, but a lot of it is again, working with the attorney and coming up with. Hopefully, does that make sense? Because the way to think about this is, I know affordable housing is a scary word. People don't like that. But it's also an opportunity where if your TIP district, you know, as we said, tip number one is generating about a million dollars a year in increments. If you can put that into a special revenue fund and potentially use that for future construction projects or anything else. It's something to consider. Again, it's totally up to you, but that's just what we've been seeing our clients.
Because on the other side of the spectrum is if we don't do that, we're going to pay it back to the taxing jurisdictions. Yes, there are percentage that's on the tax bill. So. In Harrison's case, the two million dollars, we're going to only keep thirty seven percent of that. And then it's going to get divided up amongst the other taxing jurisdictions when we close the tier. So it would behoove us to look at trying to pull a year out and save that for a special revenue and then divide up whatever's left after that. But we'll talk more about that.
All things to consider, so. And that's your report. Any questions from the board? Trustee Lancaster.
As they should move this together, I just have one. Looking at kid one, two and three, yeah. In various years there, the increment went down quite a bit. And it looks like especially to three, there is a notice of correction there. But how can the increment go back to zero when there was new construction that was there when that was farmland before?
So what happens with that is it's a calculation that's done between the assessors and the Department of Revenue. So usually what happens is the best way to explain it is something was not. Correctly identified on the tax roll. So either. There's a couple of scenarios. So one would be that we've had some municipalities where there was property that was supposed to be put into the TID that wasn't. So essentially what happens is that creates a correction that's done by the assessor. Where the assessor says, oh, this property actually should have been. So then what it does is it creates one year, you're going to see your increment jump dramatically. And then what the D O R does is they do a formula then that backs it out and puts it essentially back to zero. The other scenario where that occurs is usually it is. When the assessor has to get their information into the Department of Revenue. It's simply too much. So what they're trying to estimate is, okay, I think when I submit this, if they're looking at an apartment complex that's being built. And it's say fifty percent done. They have to estimate what they think that increment is going to be as of one one of next year. So they do an educated assumption and sometimes they're dead on and sometimes they're not. So what it causes is this kind of fluctuation that you're seeing sometimes in years where. You're right, it should be always, it should always continue to grow. But because of the fact that either they overestimated something or they underestimated something. It causes a bit of a flux where you'll see one year, you'll have a large increase. Next year it's back down, it's being negative and then it kind of vanish. Um, we're still working with the D O R to try to figure out like, there's got to be a better way of not damn it anymore to stabilize. But that's what we've seen is just, there's a constant. It's a destination by your assessor and trying to determine what the guidance would be. And sometimes they're dead on and sometimes they could be completely off. And so then the D O R has to go back and correct.
So what I'm seeing here is it's mostly the latter.
Yes.
But it was also some internal, from what I understand, there was some internal issues. The way it was reported out from staff. Um, and we can talk more about that some other time, but, um, I think the village had some issues with. What they reported out, you guys, when I was first coming in and I was questioning a lot of stuff. So, um. You know, we can talk about what that looks like if you have interest outside of this meeting, but, um, it was a staffing issue with the assessor.
Right, fair enough. And then, sorry, one last, sorry. Also the same to like to number three, we've got, there were things in the project plan that we didn't do. What, what, is there any impact on doing those late? There were a couple of million dollars. There were stuff that was supposed to be expended during original project plan that we didn't do.
Yes. So where that's going to fall into is when we get to the expenditure end period for that tick. That's when we're going to want to have those conversations of, okay, if we're going to change down any projects for the prospect, do you want to do that? And so what that would require is essentially we would want to get a contract in place or have the board. Authorized to be able to use the remaining increments to do those projects. Uh, we were going into that in platform where we had to say, thank, we had some projects that originally we didn't do because of funding or just anything else. And then after we got to that expenditure deadline, we essentially said, okay. You know, we think we're going to, as you chap, point, that increment, if you don't use it, it essentially goes back to the taxing jurisdictions. And the point of it is to use it on. Projects that will help. So that's where we would look at, you know, continuing to monitor review with the staff is, okay. As we keep updating this report, which is the whole thing you guys want to keep updated, is we'll kind of keep monitoring that and go. But remember, these were those plan, those projects we didn't do, are we still going to do those? Does the performer show that we can follow staff and push them in? If we can, let's talk about when that makes sense to do and get it on books. All right, thank you.
Any other que. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Those are important. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to reports. Um, everyone's had a chance to look at the reports. I was trying to ask if there's any reports in our packet that. Anyone on the order or anyone from the staff has a question around? Matt and Martin.
Uh, no.
Thank you, um. I'm going to go ahead and get to approval of. Bills and claims. Everyone's had a chance to redo the bills and claims for July twenty twenty five. I'm looking for anyone who has a second for approval of the. Do we shut?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, those old claims.
Mark.
No, so go.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Van Hattie. Any discussion? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have old business. Looks like we don't have any old business. So that's good. Uh, moving on to agenda item twelve A.
All right, this is a certified survey map with Strangers Family Trust High Line Road, parcels three nine zero one two and three nine zero one zero. And the motion is to approve the certified survey map with Strangers Family Trust High Line Road, parcels three nine zero one two, three nine zero one zero.
Trustee Lancaster.
Motion of, motion. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Motion to currently grant a second. Second.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Peter. Any discussion? If no discussion, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item twelve B.
This is a certified survey map for Jason Lining Fire Lane twelve, parcels three nine 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 four, three nine 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 six. And four zero 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 zero. And the motion is to approve the certified survey map for Jason Lining Fire Lane twelve for parcels three nine 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 four. Three nine 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 six and four zero 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 zero.
Trustee Lancaster.
Motion to approve.
Uh, trustee Van Hattie.
Oh, second.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Van Hattie. Any discussion?
Just a question. What's a flag line? Does anybody know?
A flag line is actually a lot where your street footage is very narrow and it goes like a longer right and the. Majority of the parcel is in the back.
Okay.
Our ordinance requires you to generate these thirty three. You have to at least thirty three feet of frontage in order to qualify. And then if you can meet that requirement, then you can kind of like flag it and and try to make the larger part of the lot on a street footage.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot.
Wait, wait.
Trustee Lancaster.
Just a question in general, part of the building procedure because I. And probably there's a building that kind of resists that on a seven parcel for a while. Would you like? Do we have any process in place, checks wise or things to make sure like if there be a. Bathroom or things like that in a building that was trading back to other part of a property that now what's we splitting things up that you're, you know. Potential different owners get all pieces of things that they don't realize they don't.
Yes, we have. The building inspector has done in this case, we inspection of that existing. Right. To make sure that it's correct, correct, the area is suited, it's going to its own subject change and most things, yes.
Okay.
Trustee Van Hattie.
Yes, um. Just for Matt's. Information, that subject wasn't reviewed under any commission meetings last week on that lot. With the building that had the sewer and stuff. So that was all viewed and approved by the county commission last week.
Go ahead and vote your ballot, please. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item twelve C.
Um, this is a site plan review for the North Shore Golf Club at the eighty four twenty one North Shore Road, parcel three nine nine one eight. And the motion is to approve the site plan for North Shore Golf Club and eighty four twenty one North Shore Road, parcel three nine nine one eight with following conditions. Number one, a detailed site plan review pursuant to article X one 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 of the zoning ordinance shall be completed prior to issuance of zoning and building permits. Number two, the site plan is subject to the review and recommendations of the village of Pearson's engineers of record. Three, a grading and drainage stormwater management plan and erosion control plan shall be reviewed and approved by the village engineer and village staff. Four, only those uses permitted in the applicable zoning district shall be allowed within the developments. And five, all applicable local, county and state rules, regulations and permits are shown here.
Trustee Baldwin.
Yes, I'm making a motion to approve the site plan review for North Shore Golf Club. This print is circulated.
Trustee Van Hattie. No, sorry. So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Van Hattie. Any discussion?
Can, is can I clarify that's which conditions?
Yes, who can.
Any discussion? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve D.
All right, this is a zoning map amendment for rezoning for Strangers Family Trust High Line Road, part of parcel three nine oh one oh. And the motion is to approve the zoning map amendment for Strangers Family Trust High Line Road, part of parcel three nine oh oh.
Trustee Lancaster.
Motion to approve the rezoning is currently circulated.
Trustee Peter.
Second.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Phil. Any discussion? Having no discussion. Having no discussion, please vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously, next up, we have twelve E.
This is a site plan review for Silver Tree Homes LLC, W four eight four two Field Crest Drive, parcel four seven, four seven zero two zero and the Crossroads Business Park. And the motion is to approve the site plan for Silver Tree Homes LLC, W four eight four two Field Crest Drive, parcel four seven zero two zero and the Crossroads Business Park. With the following conditions. Number one, a detailed site plan review pursuant to article eight of the zoning ordinance shall be completed prior to state issuance of the zoning and building permits. Two, the site plan is subject to the review and recommendations of the village of Harrison's engineer record. Three, a grading drainage stormwater management plan and erosion control plan shall be reviewed and approved by the village engineer and village staff. Four, only those uses permitted in the applicable zoning district shall be allowed within the developments. And five, all applicable local county and states rules, regulations and ordinance is showing that.
Trustee Baldwin?
I will make a motion to approve the site plan review for Silver Tree Homes LLC, including the um, provisions through uh, as printed and circulated.
Trustee Lancaster? All second, so we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Lancaster, is there any discussion on this?
We just wanna say that this is the first parcel that is being sold in the crossroads business park, the plan is to uh. Uh, owns on that property next week and they're hoping to break ground here at the stall.
Trustee Lancaster?
Two, that was one, very excited to see the first business um, in that, in the business park, so it's exciting to have a staff for securing this. Uh, my only comment is, as some of this is forward. Um, information is probably excellent, we are just making sure that with the building inspector and stuff that the. Plans and stuff match the bright uses, cuz I know we've had some issues in the past with commercial buildings not matching their uses and thoughtful catchings up front. So thank you.
Next up, we have twelve F.
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was any other discussion, let's go ahead and vote our ballot, sorry.
Thank you.
Alright, the motion passes unanimously, next up, we have twelve F.
Alright, this is a site plan review for Proish Caverns LLC, West four eight three six Crossroads Court, parcel four seven zero three two. The Crossroads Business Park. The motion is to approve the site plan for Proish Caverns LLC, W four eight three six Crossroads Court. Parcel four seven zero three two in the Crossroads Business Park with the following conditions. Number one, a detailed site plan review pursuant to article eight of the zoning ordinance shall be completed prior to the issuance of zoning and building permits. Two, the site plan is subject to the review and recommendations of the village of Harrison's engineer record. Three, a grading drainage stormwater management plan and erosion plan shall be reviewed and approved by the village engineer and village staff. Four, only those uses permitted in the applicable zoning district shall be allowed within the developments. And five, all applicable local county and state rules, regulations and ordinance is showing that.
Trustee Van Hattie?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, site plan review for Excalis LLC, W four eight three six, Crossroads Court, parcel four seven zero three two. Crossroads Business Park with uh, conditions printed and circulated from staff.
Trustee Peter?
All second.
So we got a motion by trustee Van Hattie and a second by trustee Field, any discussion on this? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously, I do have a question on this. So the other parcel was actually first and this one was second. Next up, we have twelve G.
Um, this is a tree and sidewalk policy and this is discussion only.
Okay, Chad, go ahead and.
We have a discussion first.
Sure, at the last meeting, the, there was discussion about placing this, these two items, they were future agenda items for the. Tree and sidewalk policies on the agenda for discussion by the board. It was asked not to spend much time on it, so I took each other's memo and stuck it in your packet and it's up to. The board to kind of give us some advice as to how you want to have us proceed. So the ball's in your court.
Um, trustee Lancaster?
Thank you. So we have heard interest from individuals. Um, and we've had some extraordinary debate actually the past couple years on this board about trees. And specifically people wanting trees in their front yards, trees in the terraces and. I do feel like feeling trees are important, are important for our climate, that trees can live life, trees lower your temperature. Uh, your environment. Many, many different benefits. The problem with the terrace part of it, that we've had in the past is. It's in the village right away then, so technically the village owns the trees. And now the village has to maintain those trees. We do not have a village forestry department. And we do not have a village forester, or not like a city, all the time, you have a city forester with a large forestry department behind it. Uh, I don't believe our tax base and our tax rate would support us adding a forestry department and a forester, so I don't believe we should be doing that. Um, and so what really, the trees tightening the sidewalks here. Where I really believe we need to figure out probably some public endpoint, but. With this, but I believe we need to rethink our sidewalk policies. I've talked to numerous walkers. Um, I myself live in a subdivision that does not have sidewalks. Um, there's a trail on the main thoroughfare however, and I've talked to many of the residents that walk on the road and I've. And they have no problem on the side streets for saying here. That our streets are wide enough and they feel safe enough walking on the side streets. They would like to see, they're glad we have the trail on knowing, for example. They would like to see our trail network expanded on our major thoroughfares. And so, and part of this is working with developers, right, as new subdivisions and stuff come. Uh, as well, and we've changed some village policies to require some trails and road raises, so some, some of this will take care of that, right, but. I really believe we should be looking at making sure we have safe passage on the arterial roads. And the roads going in and out of subdivisions, so that could take traffic. But our side streets in the subdivisions that are low traffic. Do we really need the sidewalks at all? Or, or in both sides even, is it one side or the other, so someone only does want a sidewalk and they're okay with sidewalk, they combine that lot with the sidewalk from their side, they don't. There's probably a couple different flavors of this. And why I believe we need to remove some of the sidewalk requirements is. That will then allow the lots that do not have a sidewalk in it. You're not having to delineate so much terrace. And now someone can plant a tree closer to their actual lot line. Or the front, or normally it would be right up against the sidewalk, so they couldn't do it with sidewalk, but without a sidewalk. They can plant right up against their lot line per se, giving them plenty of room in their front yard to have a nice front yard tree. That is still their tree on their property, so now the village doesn't have to be responsible. Um, for it, so that, that's what's kind of leading. To this discussion tonight and, and my two cents of talking to numerous people, so.
Okay, trustee Baldwin?
Yes, um, I believe I originally asked for this to be the tree part of this, to be on the agenda a lot back. And it was based on some feedback that I got from some very passionate people about trees and allowing them to be planted in Harrison. Uh, when I saw this on the agenda, I was really hoping that some of those people would show up so they could give more perspective, not just mine. Um, and I, I agree, we don't have a forestry department, I, and while I think the aesthetics of having trees along a, you know, street are beautiful. There's the maintenance and the upkeep, so the only thing I would like to do in closing this out from my perspective is just asking us, you know. All to be open to this, if we do get additional requests, just not an automatic rubber stamp, no, but considering, you know, as time goes forward. You know, what can we do to help people plant trees and allow them to. I'm fine with this as the end of my discussion part.
Trustee Van Hattie?
Yes, um. We just redid our comprehensive plan and uh. One of the things that people want to save in the village Harrison is, you know, green, green space. And we are not the city of Kimberly and we are not the city of Appleton here, so. I would like to um, continue to um, manage that very carefully going forward. Because we are not in, in the. Business of picking up leaves off streets like Appleton does and Kimberly does, so I. Wanna be careful how we move forward here and not open this up to. Becoming more of a city atmosphere in the country and we're sure I'll have a lot, you know, there's a lot of people in my area that are. But there's, there's a reason they moved up here from Appleton and Kimberly is to get away from. City services like that and policies when it comes to sidewalks and trees and stuff like that, so I was gonna make that.
Thank you, so I will also, you know, but I do believe that. We looked at this at twenty twenty and were. Sidewalk policy and the input we got from one of the developers was, it was no big deal to him either way. Uh, as far as putting the sidewalks in, so basically convinced the board that it wasn't that big of a deal, but now I think about it. This last election was about keeping the rural feel of the community, so. I don't know what the board feels, but I think we should change our road policy to take the requirement for having sidewalks and new subdivisions over. Unfortunately, I don't think that's going to allow people to put trees in the village right away anyway. But I don't know if there's a current rule that says. That a tree has to be so far away from a sidewalk, is that currently in? So technically someone could one foot away or even two feet away right up to the edge of their.
They could, but you know, then couldn't, I mean like. They technically it's their property, but you know, we would encourage, but. You don't believe, at this point, we say where it's gonna be, numbers will be either, must we write that?
Yeah, um, and then lastly, I will also say that um. Just the city of Appleton spends two million dollars a year in picking up leaves. Across the whole um, community, so I want to be careful that. We are wanting to make sure our tax base is, uh, our, our meal rate is low, we need to make sure that. People are responsible for their own leaves instead of let's just throw up trees everywhere and then expect the, the, the village to like. Around and pick those trees up. And if we had to pick up leaves, how much more personnel would we need to have in the fall in order to support that? And the equipment?
Well, that's just it, you're gonna need a vacuum, you're gonna need trucks to put it in, you're gonna need two guys running the vacuum. One guy pull it in, and one guy getting his truck. Trucks fill up depending on the weight load, Appleton, they fill up, probably three trucks on a city block. It's a lot of stuff.
So before we went after that, I would wanna make sure that we have quantified estimates as far as what was the first to have those kind of services before we just say. To, uh, how would you say, accept the. Emotions of people who feel passionate about something, that, that's fine, but I wanna make sure we look at exactly what we're gonna get into. Because everything has consequences, not just now, but also in the ten to twenty year timeframe, but I think. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I do think having sidewalks for new subdivisions, I think. We could possibly take that.
Sorry, though, in the Forest Ridge subdivision, which is newest to rid one off of North Shore Old Highway Road. In the development agreement, when I wrote it, now it's, it'll probably come to you in September meeting. Um, it's waiting for company from the developer, but we talked internally about sidewalks just on one side of the road. And the reason for that is that development has the park in the middle of the. Was that two dedicated park spaces, you know, one near Old Highway Road in North Shore and then a stormwater detention pond in the back. Um, and there's some opportunity for the future with the dedication of a lot in the stormwater pond to have a playground. And, you know, I worry about, you know, kids going to the park on the wall or. You know, we're not having something, so it's without showing you, but I, the, the thought was is how do we. Kind of do an internal circulation and just have the sidewalks on one side of. And, 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 and connect it into the park so that the kids have a means to get there without having to be in the hole. Maybe it's a compromise like that and it's maybe not a policy that, that's handwritten, that's. It's really like case by case basis, depending on how the, the subdivision is laid out, whether it's gonna have. Full sidewalks or sidewalks or no sidewalks.
Trustee Lancaster?
I do kind of like that compromise of sidewalks on one side of the road because then you're giving too many people are buying lots and things. They're given that opportunity where if there's someone that prefers a sidewalk. They can buy that lot, if they prefer not to have that sidewalk in their front yard, they can buy the opposite lot, plus you still aren't giving, making sure you have some safe passage. In that subdivision, um. I do believe we do have and are required by still, that we do require the sidewalks, so if we're going to have. Some pointy gradient, some leeway, but I think we probably need an absence policy to maintain that leeway, so that will follow in our own rules.
And I think if the September meeting, we can bring back some suggestions on the current policy to kind of. Relax it, if you will, a little bit and make it at the discretion of the staff and the board based on the design of the subdivision. Cause everyone is in a different and have different requirements.
The other, the other piece of that too really is, you think about sidewalks on one side versus both, they, they give you some benefit. But also gives a little more rural feel and we have heard that people want more of a rural feel, so you're not just high grade jungle as you're creating.
Trustee Peter?
Yeah, it sounds to me like this is not a, a yes or no situation, you can or, or, you know, we shall. Require or, or we should, it, it sounds to your point. Every development is its own conversation, uh, if we have a policy somehow. You know, I, I think it just needs to be that. The development of this, of this plot has to kind, take into consideration sidewalk construction. In a manner that makes sense, according to, for that, and it's gonna be different for the next one.
I agree, any more discussion? You got enough there, Chad?
Sure, we'll bring some thoughts back to the next meeting.
Okay, next up, we have item twelve H.
Alright, this is um, the discussion on yard waste stickers and again, discussion only. Yeah, so this was my agenda item I brought forward, um, I made out to some of my staff, so obviously looking at, you know. Looking at integrated services and looking for efficiencies, um, so I'm looking at the most foot traffic at the front counter. Uh, most of what we get is for yard waste stickers, so. Um, I know we've been tossing ideas around, you know, in, in the office on how to, you know, manage this, so maybe make it easier for residents to obtain these stickers. And, you know, make sure obviously they have the most access to the yard waste site as possible, so we were trying to propose a two year sticker, so for instance. You know, someone next year would get a twenty six, twenty seven sticker, the following year there'd be a twenty seven, twenty eight, depending on when they came in, just for ease of not having a priority sticker. You know, just complications based on the cost of stickers being so low, so. Um, the thought was it would still be the normal cost of twenty dollars each year, but then that would save them an additional trip into. Um, you know, those tall, the following year to get a sticker, and if we were to go more online services. Um, you know, obviously with increases in postage, if we have to mail stickers, that would also save a cost on mailings of those types of things as well. Um, and then what would be also new would be doing a five dollar replacement fee for a sticker. Um, currently we have quite a few each year, if someone gets a new vehicle, they rent the sticker at half, they lose one. Right now we replace it at no additional cost, um, and that's been kind of tossed back and forth in the office, you know, what's the right way or wrong way to handle that and. I think a five dollar fee to just replace the sticker would be a fair thing, regardless, you know, make it an overall rule for everyone. Uh, so we're just kind of looking at and trying to get some direction on this because that would impact some other revenue. Um, for the yard waste stickers, and then as well, give us some guidelines on how to update the schedule. Um, you know, that would come forward before year end to implement that as January first. Um, if you'd like, we could poll some of the public on, you know, our website or social media, but. You know, but it's, it's tough to get more people to, you know, our, cater to everyone's name, that's certainly done, we'll certainly do that as well, so.
Okay, go.
We just said, we've had some dialogue with people that have come in and said. We just said we've had some dialogue with people that have come in and said, what would make this easier and the. You know, the ones that we've talked to said a two year sticker would be a help because you wouldn't have to come here every two years to give up. I realize that you could buy a sticker on year one and move out of the village, well, that could be your problem at that point. Um but you know, it's we're talking about twenty dollars and then give the convenience of it. You know, it it it's always an issue, but we're just trying to make it more conducive to the the users and we heard that a two year sticker. Could be a starting point to kind of change them having to come here every year.
So first off, is probably been happy.
Um I'm. I'm gonna propose a two step process here. One is to, I think we should go online. I think the two year thing is excellent deal, but I think. We did we did that thing online and then. You know, you would. Staffing get notified from the online application, you know, this mail off sticker, okay. Um two, I want you to. Research what the city of Nina is doing right now, that's they're taking it one step further than that where. They do not use stickers at all, this is out there, this is about the landing, like the. Why need a rec? For like uh for parking in the lot for fishing. They have um. You pay your annual fee at the, you know. Online or at the at the. Village office there. And that red that they'll they'll register up to one or two licenses per family and then it it it's all scanned in there. So there's no. It's so they have a they have a they have a scanner then that will. Is if they go to the parking lot, they'll scan license if they want, it goes registered down, so there's no stickers involved no more. And so Nina is. You know, it's pretty deep process working over there. I'm sure it could. Long term to use on our waste site too with a scanner that we've not worked with stickers at all. I mean, right now let's stick ourselves to the our persons, you know, they're compliant for sure, their here's twenty twenty five.
Yeah, we've talked about that online piece because as June is. To Julie decides to retire out here, are we gonna find somebody else to sit in that hut and monitor the stickers, probably not, so it's probably not to go to the world. Like China, can we then uh convert over to that?
Yeah, that's a pretty. Pretty slow go where they're.
Yeah, Greenville, I think does something similar when I was on their website, I'm not exactly sure about where it's like a thought system, but obviously we have to, you know, be able to have that technology that we can as well to get there. And maybe we will eventually, I don't know, you know, timeline or some of those things, we most certainly can look into it, but at least. Or maybe kind of like short term, you know, type thing like that, we're trying to do more online services, so we'll have to kind of, you know, try to implement something, but again, at least. Somewhat of start, we wanna engage what the thoughts were. Uh the board on whether or not we, you know, could proceed on more, you know, looking into more information or at moving forward or.
Trusty Paul. Trusty Baldwin.
I think the idea of a two year sticker is great, I buy one, um I agree with what, I mean, I think people could. Pick, you know, just layers if it's there, we can be there for a year, is it possible even maybe as a transition process to offer both? When maybe in twenty twenty six, we offer a one year and a two year. Let people know that this is going toward a two year kind of a arrangement, so I don't know if that's an option or not, or if it's not worth it, that we do.
We could do that, the stickers are pretty, you know, lot low.
Five bucks off the second year. Do you worry and say something?
Yes, uh combined locks has what they have done is they have a camera out of that they monitor. Out at their we- website. They don't, they have required a sticker, but they. Focus on the la- uh license also. And it's interesting because they picked up more licenses that are not registered with them. For stickers or for use of their yard waste site. And they've solved their problem because they do have an ordinance that charges people who who use it. Their weight uh their waste site. And what they do is they just find that they just notify. Uh DOT and find out who that license belongs to and then send them a bill. And it has done a marvelous job of. Monitoring their system.
Wow, that's interesting.
Yes.
Trusty, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. So I like the the two year idea here. I do wonder a little bit, um looking at the yard waste site should not be a profit center. You know, seeing this year now, we've already exceeded our threshold progression for revenue, and I'm sure we'll price those more stickers by the fall, so. I just wonder what the. Maybe the spots should get looked at a little bit. And once we have opportunity to gather, you know, people options. That maybe by one year for twenty or you could buy a two year thirty five, they get a little break for buying a two year sticker. To encourage. People to buy a two year sticker then. The other thing my two cents would be, I would not have the replacement sticker cost. It loses it. Because. I think that's right for abuse. All someone's gotta do is come in and say, oh, I lost the sticker, pay five dollars and they hand it to their friend or buddy or neighbor. And. You could have some abuse happen there real quick, or at the very least, if you're going to have a replacement process, because maybe they get a new vehicle. They gotta bring the old one back again showing it just got, you know, hot started.
We we verify, you know, whether they're on our list, so we we keep track of all of them on a spreadsheet when we verify that they're on there when we issue it. When you lose your ATV sticker, the the DNR charges you, I think, eight or ten dollars to get the sticker, so. It's a pretty, you know, it's it's nominal, but everyone's doing it, I think. You know. We can either say now you gotta pay for another full sticker, or we can, you know, if they're on the list, we can have the charge and do the five dollars.
From my understanding in previous years, it was very difficult because that was a requirement or they tried to, that if you, you know, your sticker got damaged, you should bring it in, but if you sold your vehicle, that. That wasn't people's number one thought to rip off the yard waste sticker or think about it, or if, you know, you were in a car accident, it might not be salvageable. To get that sticker back off, so that was kind of where it was difficult, cause I think the years passed from my understanding. Sometimes it was charged or not, I don't know how he said a little years ago, but I mean, that's difficult and probably not on everybody's top priority is to make sure they grab that yard waste sticker off. Whether it's damaged or not to bring it into kind of our place, so that's where it's been a little difficult to enforce that rule. And then how are you playing favorites or, you know, this person did, this person didn't. So that made it difficult.
You had you had a question?
Yeah, with the replacing, so if I work in the law enforcement class, it's true, so a lot of times this came up for state park stickers involved any. Yard waste or overhang stickers is that. Some of the customer, they have to tell the technician, make sure you're shutting it, remnants off because I know. The DNR office has told us that they brought in parts of sticker to get replaced. They usually question a lot now, municipalities might be different, but I know for some of municipalities. Uh the customer told us, well, we brought back and revenue with that sticker off with the last that you're placing on windshield, because that goes to landfill. Um. That brought back their proof of them, so. They weren't stressed, George.
Thank you. Um. Also wanna remind the staff and the history and the board, the history on that couple site that we. Previously wanted to make sure that. The people who use the site are the ones that are paying for it, not everybody in the village uses that couple site, so. However, we budget whatever costs um plan is. I like the idea of an option, you have a one year, you buy a one year or you can buy a two year, I think that's that would be an excellent start, but we need to make sure that. Whatever revenue that we get pays for. That in so let's toss central, especially for those who don't use the yard. Here it's like that they're not. Subsidizing it, so. I think. You guys pretty crystal clear.
Yep, we've got some idea, yes.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts? Okay, let's move on to. Twelve I.
All right, this is a cancellation agreement and mutual release between the village of Harrison and Wenzel Painting for lot thirteen. In the Crossroads Business Park and the motion is to approve the cancellation agreement and mutual release between the village of Harrison. And Wenzel Painting for lot thirteen in the Crossroads Business Park.
So you're looking at your motion on this one? To cancel?
Correct.
Okay. Look at promotion the second to cancel our agreement. Trusty, do you?
I'll move to uh cancel the agreement and mutual release.
Trusty Baldwin.
I'll second.
So we got a motion by trustee deal and a second by trustee Baldwin, any discussion?
Mm hmm. I just wanna say that we've worked to try to. Keep these people um in there, they're a small company in Grilling. And the original cost of two or three years ago, the building was eight hundred thousand, today the cost is about one four million. And they just can't pay out that much debt as a small um business to try to make this work, so. And so they were really looking forward to a lever too, um they just feel that it's not in their um tool chest at this point to try to move forward.
If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and uh hold our ballots. Against us to cancel the agreement. Alright, the motion passes unanimously, next up, we have item twelve J.
This is a special event permit for Fox Cities Marathon, and staff recommends approving Fox Cities Marathon special event permit.
Trusty, then happy.
Yeah, like my motion to approve the special permit for. Fox Cities Marathon with staff's printed circular conditions.
Trusty Baldwin.
I'll second.
So we have a uh motion by trustee Ben Happy and a second by trustee Baldwin, any discussion? If no discussion, let's go ahead and lower ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up is twelve K.
Um Fox Cities Festival lights waiver for Darby Community Park Shelter, and staff recommends approving the Fox Cities Festival once. Request to waiver the park shelter.
Trusty Baldwin.
Make motion to approve waiving the park shelter penalty for Fox Cities Festival lights.
Trusty Ben Happy.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Ben Happy, any discussion? Trusty, link Castor.
So my only question is that I feel like that. This should have a contingency added to it. That there's some kind of memo of understanding. Signed between the village staff. And the festival lights. Because we've been subject to complaint emails from them in the past, feeling like the village has not done enough for them, or not done the right things for them, or haven't done this or haven't done that. Including the whole laundry list we got. In the spring tonight here. So I really actually feel that we need to either approve this. Intention on the memo of understanding. Or this should be actually tabled and run back with a memo of understanding, so that everybody's on the same page of who's doing what. And that there's not any disagreements in the trustalness that we've had in the last few years.
Sure, we can work on that, I think. Um we were meeting with them in September to try to go through, to make sure everyone's clear and what needs to be happening. Um but we can kind of put it on paper and mark them on something. So maybe um. I guess we could, you could tailor it to the September meeting, so.
So I'm just gonna ask a dumb question, what is this? Letter of understanding, what was it, it's legally binding, it's a contract?
I don't think it has to be overly elaborate, it could be a one page thing, just a bullet so who's doing what, so that. We don't get the email sent to us as a board and staff complaining that. We did this to them and we did that to them. I mean, they're great, it's a great event, I want the event to be at Harrison, I'm happy it's here. But there is, I learned a long time ago, if you have discussions upfront. That everybody's agreed to, it leads to not having problems later and everybody knows, okay, this clown's snowing, don't go move my building out of the way, why did you do that, there's a whole lot. See that, and it wasn't just one year, it was year after year, so it's been a recurring, it's each of, not against that, it's been a recurring thing, that's all.
So let's see, maybe let's try it this year without it, I think we. Developed a framework at the end of the season last year with them and we're having meetings this year and and gonna work through it and let's see if we. If we've solved some of those issues, I think some of the issues was like a follow up by certain individuals in the past. So let's see if it becomes a problem in next year, I I I think we've corrected a lot of that and I feel better about.
Okay, that's fair. Trusty Baldwin.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'd like the suggestion because it sounds like retribution or, you know, revenge or whatever for giving us feedback and I think we should be open to feedback and I. If they're, you know, if they're really intense with demands and everything like that, that's different, but it sounds like you got, you're in a good place with them. And as long as everything's out on the table, I I'm open to us accepting feedback, good, bad, or indifferent, rather than saying. You can only have this for free if you be or something similar.
Alright, so we have a motion, I said. Trusty, I think.
Yes, I'm aware of the last several years, what Matt has been saying, I think um. What would you could easily do was called a memorandum of understanding. And put together a checklist of the memorandum of understanding. These are our. Uh conditions for the village everything, meaning get this way or from permit. That's, that's a very simple process to document it, otherwise it's kind of free for all for another year and we will hear some more stuff again this year. But if you just have a memorandum of of understanding of these conditions. That I'm sure Jeff and other people can come up with the the issue, pressure points. You know, that he agrees to ahead of time. That holds him accountable. Uh and that's all I'm saying, it's it's a great event, but it that it has to be. A win win here, it can't be a win lose, and that's all I ask.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table, so are we tabling or are we gonna continue to move forward?
Moving forward.
Okay, we're gonna move forward, let's go ahead and lower ballots. Unless you wanna make an amendment.
I'm gonna make, you know what? We'll see where this goes, but I am gonna make an amendment. To the motion and. I spent attention on a memory of understanding between the village and the best full lights, so who's responsible for what? So that we can show that we're valued, they are valued partner and that is truly a valued partnership with all parties and it's a one way situation then. And it puts the staff in a good spot then, and it puts them in a good spot. That clearly knows who's what's doing what.
So we have a motion for amendments.
Uh yeah, I I.
Yes, I I support Matt on that, so that's a second on these, I have a second. Okay, discussion. I would only say I. Would agree in principle to the memorandum, but what does the memorandum look like?
Just a one pager, blow fall the snow, yes, Billy's just calling the snow. Okay.
Would that include not having a trailer? On the parking lot, on the on the par- parking lot or?
Parking lot on the west side that we've had to ask them to move it multiple years, just whatever, you know, you guys have a list, you have to put. And they might have a list of concerns that they want from us, it's.
You put your mic out so that we can.
Yes. It it's meant to be not punishment, it's not retribution what whatsoever, they're a great organization, I'm glad they do, I wanna make that clear. Having a one page. Two, whatever it turns into, or two pages, doesn't have to be elaborate, I'm not saying a big contractor and just a whole of the list, the village will do this. They will do the X. So that way there's no misunderstandings. And that. Their staff, their volunteers and our staff. Don't talk, you know, don't have expectations, not mentally or sign and and. So we, they can have a successful event and we can be successful during the time and. Also there event, it's bound on snow and all that, it could be a very busy time for village staff, so then everybody knows what's. What's expected, that's all.
I don't see an issue, I think we can develop some.
So I would also say. That that. Memorandum of understanding would. Need to be. Developed or we have to let Chad take that and run, so my only concern is is. Who's gonna, what's the FBI, right, we're gonna approve this memorandum of understanding, but we, I don't know what the exact. Well, items are.
I I think Jeff and I think Jeff. With that's nice list already, okay, so. I think Jeff has a nice list right there, we go with Jeff's one, it's it's, we he knows it works, we'll go with her.
It's, I think it's easier while we're making it.
Yes, Scott, okay, I just wanna make sure.
I think I don't have, I have ideas. Yeah.
Okay, so this is trusty link Castor, go ahead.
And I don't even need to know, just to be clear on my amendment, I do not need to come back to the board, staff is fully. Um. Intelligent and can you handle that, it's just.
Yeah.
Then a staff can tell them the board asked for this, so you may work it out and. Whatever you feel it needs to be in there or not in there, that's your discretion, I think it doesn't have to come back to the board, it's our business or. To across media and everything too. Thank you.
So for an amendment, we'll just do, we'll call on the amendment, so trusty link Castor.
Uh yes.
Hi. Hi, alright.
Hi.
Alright, so the amendment passes now. Uh any further discussion on the. First. Motion. If not, let's go ahead and vote our ballots. If not, let's go ahead and blow our ballots.
Yeah, I thought we were voted to not do them.
So we have, it passes um with one nay. But I think trustee Ben Happy misunderstood his vote. Did you wanna change that?
Yeah, I, yes, I'll change it. I.
He wants to change his votes from the highest. Is that possible? Oh, man, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next up is twelve L.
This is approval of contract with GovAI for AI services. And the motion is to approve a contract with GovAI for six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for a one-year subscription.
Alright, Chad, you're open.
So I just, I worked with the county who is also contracting with GovAI and negotiated a pretty sweet deal. So we were able to kind of go off of their tailwinds and get a reduced rate of sixty thousand nine fifty versus the four thousand nine fifty. I had the village attorney look at the contract and he did see any issues with it and said that um agreed with me that if it doesn't work out, we don't have to renew, but we have to start somewhere. I did do a webinar with uh GovAI and they are very formulated towards government stuff versus a chat GPT or those of co-pilots. So um I think there's a lot of good stuff that can help streamline operations, especially when it comes to zoning ordinances and other things. You can kind of dump your zoning ordinance into it and then have it more searchable than what we have today. Uh so I think there's, there's benefits for the staff and we recommend moving forward. Our insurance company is recommending we have some kind of platform. So we're just not pushing all this information out to the world wide web.
Trustee Lancaster.
Motion to approve the contract with GovAI is printed in circlement.
Trustee Ben Happy.
Oh, sorry.
So I have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Ben Happy. Any discussion? Trustee Baldwin.
Yes, just a question. And if this is not on the agenda, I shouldn't ask, but where are we with all the ordinance realizations that we're doing? Is that something I can ask now or is it still?
We, they'll be coming forward. We're kind of bunching them together versus bringing every chapter to you. So uh Mick Mann continues to work with staff on it. Uh there's a different project manager. Russ is not on it anymore. There's another person that's had, was a former clerk and has more experience. So it's going well. It's just that it's a lengthy process because there's a lot of stuff that has to be researched.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have one question. So it says here in the memo that it's uh six thousand nine hundred and fifty, but this would come out of the general fund. This is not a budget item. Is that correct?
Yeah, currently.
We have contract, we have a contract services line that there is flexible. What do we get in? That's been bargained in. So we would just pay for it under there.
So I would hope that we have something comes up like this and I'm not opposed to it. I just feel as though for the public, or it's not. We, we gotta show, you know, how this affects the overall budget. And I know six thousand nine hundred and fifty isn't gonna bring the thing, but I think it would be nice just so that at least when we're voting on it, that people say, oh, we're voting on this contract. We, we should at least denote, hey, this is out of the general fund or you know, the, the actual thing side of it, just so that we're not we're, we're being held accountable to the, to the taxpayers. Alright, if there's no other further discussion, let's go ahead and blow our ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item M.
Alright, this is for various payment requests. And there's just a slight correction on the overall agenda of this. Um but the memo was correct. So Harrison Commerce Park, or it's at four hundred and eighty thousand, she's four hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents and one hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eleven cents. And then Darway Park Lighting Project final payment, three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. And the motion is to approve the various payments under contract for the contract work totaling five hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Trustee Lancaster.
Motion to approve the various payment projects for the five hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents from the two sources uh allocated in this period of time.
That's good, happy. I have one quick question. On that Darway Lighting Project, uh there's a one light. It was a damage from a logging company in the back trail that has fixed yet, so it's, is that any fixed yet this year?
We hope so that it's ordered and it's taking a long time to get that one light. But once it comes, we will then have our contractor install it and build the lighting company and they would read the
Okay.
Um but we won't be releasing this until after that's taken care of.
Okay. Then I will second that motion.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Ben Happy. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll blow our ballots. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item N or twelve N.
This is authorization of the village manager to approve change orders more than five thousand dollars for the new fire station seventy project. And the motion is to authorize the village manager to approve change orders more than five thousand dollars following the village's emergency purchasing procedures of the purchasing policy.
Trustee Ben Happy.
Will they make a motion to approve authorization of the village manager to approve change orders more than five thousand dollars for the new fire station seven project is printed circularly?
Trustee Baldwin.
A second.
So I have a motion by trustee Ben Happy and a second by trustee Baldwin. Any discussion?
There's a discussion, as I may, I did hear from a couple trustees about, well, what happens if the um amount is so much that it's, you know, larger than whatever? There should be a threshold on this. Uh so my, my response to that is um I'm hoping to keep everybody on a weekly basis involved with the decisions that are being had. So you'll know before we get to that point. Um I'm also concerned about keeping this project on track. And just that, that given that the order means months of month, the concern of not being able to make a decision and keep the contractor going is gonna cost us more money in the long run because we're gonna get downtime. And the third part about that is, is we have a different process here where we've got a construction manager window that was going to be, who is basically looking out for our interest in this project versus working with a general contractor who's trying to make as much money as they can out of the deal. Um so I think there's a number of things in claim that will, you know, affect us. And I would hope we're not coming in with a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollar contracts because their change orders have then be really, somebody has busted something in the design. I think the other point of that is this has been built, bid out in five separate contracts. A lot of those issues and concerns were addressed in the bidding process. Uh because we just didn't have one general and a bunch of subs. So I think this, the parameters are in place. And between the village president and myself, um I'm guessing these are gonna be, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty thousand on average. Uh but it's really just to keep, keep this project on track so that we're not lagged behind uh because we have to wait for board approval.
Trustee Lancaster.
Uh thanks for the, for the feedback there. Um I'm actually very glad you brought this forward. Honestly, um because you're right, it is a different situation with the construction manager and I didn't think it was money. And I think we have enough faith and trust in you as a, as our village manager that you're gonna do what's right. And if you feel uncomfortable with something, then that's when you're gonna get all with, you know, you know, any part of this is talking to the village president, but I, I don't, I don't have to worry about that because if something does seem like wait a second, you're, you're gonna probably say, I want a special board meeting. We're gonna have a board meeting to talk about it. So I have very faith in you, Chad, and you brought this forward.
Any other discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and blow our ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve O one.
Um this is thermal imaging, imaging camera purchase and it's two purchase two uh flirt, I don't know how to pronounce that, but Marcade fifty-three thermal imaging cameras and apparatus mounts in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents.
It should also be noted that this will have zero impact on the budget and no cost of the taxpayers because it's gonna be funded with two percent fire dues.
Alright, so trustee Baldwin.
Motion to approve two of the Marcade fifty-three thermal imaging cameras and apparatus mounts in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents.
Trustee Deel.
I'll start again.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Deel. Any discussion? If no discussion, let's go ahead and blow, blow our ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve P.
This is Halloween in the Park and a request to waive rental fees and a donation. Um and the motion is to approve the request by spell pack three zero six one to waive the park rental fees and donate twelve hundred dollars to support the Halloween in the Park community.
Trustee Lancaster.
Take a motion to approve the request of waiving the park fees and the twelve hundred dollar donation. Um I should have budgeted source on here, but I'm thinking that twelve hundred dollars would come from the uh program fees that we, we have.
Question, I, you have that budgeted, yes.
Alright.
Trustee.
Thank you, Holden. I just wanted to comment to Joe. Thank you for bringing us up and I appreciate it, but you for the training. Oh, thank you.
Trustee Ben Happy.
Trustee.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Ben Happy. Any discussion? If not, go ahead and blow your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve Q.
This is approval of furniture for new fire station seventy by EDI for one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents. And the motion is to approve it from EDI for furniture in the new fire station seventy for a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Trustee Ben Happy.
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to approval of furniture for the new fire station seventy by EDI for one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents with staff's recommendations.
Trustee Deel.
I'll start again.
So we have a motion by trustee Ben Happy and a second by trustee Deel. Any discussion?
I, I would just like to say that uh teacher, uh girl and myself had spent a lot tonight on this. I know more about furniture than fire department furniture than I ever cared to know. Um we had gone and sat in chairs and tried out uh beds and done everything. I think we've gotten to a point where we feel tolerable with how we perform with EDI. And as I stated in my memo, we're really, given that we have construction projects in a number of other locations, um who will be kind of looking at EDI as our preferred vendor because my thought pattern behind this is I would like to be buying office furniture that can be interchangeable with different offices. So we don't have all these different sets. And we can't if somebody moves or somebody changes or wants a different filing cabinet or whatever it might be, we have the flexibility to move stuff around the organization versus just having all these one-off systems and none of them can be worked together. So that's kind of the plan with um coming up with this. EDI also has a state negotiated contract with the uh colleges. So we're getting that discounted rate. As you can see, we originally had budgeted in the, the budget, two hundred and seventy-one thousand and work with that cost. So um we've gotten a good cost with them. They, they're providing what we need and um it's been a good relationship.
Any other discussion? If not, go ahead and blow your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up is twelve R.
This is the approval of quote for port in place and engineered wood fiber surfacing for Redwood Park from Lee Recreation LLC for forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And the motion is to approve it quote from Lee Recreation LLC for port in place and engineered wood fiber wood shifts for Redwood Park for forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Trustee Baldwin.
I made a motion to approve the quote from Lee Recreation LLC for port in place and engineer wood fiber wood shifts for Redwood Park for forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Trustee Lancaster.
I'll start again.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Lancaster. Any discussion?
I just wanna state that this is kind of one of the last um pieces we're gonna need to do that. There are a few things that have been done either that project is coming along. No, it's gonna be the age probably this week. And then this work will kind of be the kind of finishing touches for port in places like the rubberized um playground that will be there for AD accessibility to make this uh playground um AD accessible and inclusive to everybody. Um and then the engineered wood fiber is, is an upgrade of the wood chips that wouldn't be more, is more than just chip stuff that we have at the yard base site. Um and it's safer for the kids. So this is the, kind of the last uh play of this. And hopefully this park gets wrapped up sometime at the end of September and we uh are shooting to try to have a grand opening or a ribbon cutting for the purpose of ten in October.
Trustee Lancaster.
That was actually my question. So I'm fine to hear you're looking at area more formal, right? No, we haven't done that before. But another person, I think this is cause for celebration for the community.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, go ahead and blow your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up is twelve S.
This is open, open discussion and consideration to discuss contract extension between the village of Harrison and River Search Football Club prior to potentially going into closed session to discuss strategy and bargaining authority for the village manager to use in negotiation of that agreement. And the motion is to convene in closed session to discuss strategy and bargaining authority to use in negotiation of the agreement between the village of Harrison and River Search Football.
So while we're in open session, is there any discussion that we want to have before we talk about any negotiations? Trustee Lancaster.
It, it, I can just interject. So um just to read off my head in the memo, just there's public here is that the village that board had approved a contract with River Surge in twenty twenty-three was a two-year agreement uh to use the farmer field soccer fields. That agreement expires at the end of September. There's no language in the agreement as to how it renews or how it gets terminated. So those are one of the things we need to talk about. We also need to talk about the interest from other groups that are wanting to use the fields um at that park as more popularity and less space is available. So the point of this closed session is to try to get some direction from the board as to how to either renegotiate or terminate the contract, whatever the board decides to do with it. Uh and what parameters that should be for the staff to go back and have a conversation with the football club.
Trustee Lancaster, I'll throw your uh.
Thank you. Uh just a comment that I was my colleague, Ray Covington from uh River Search um soccer club is here in the audience. Um he is a village and person president and does have interest in becoming the village's contact with the club to help with facilitating some things and being a president of the village. So thank you.
So I, that's, I just that's all that we need to discuss. And I, I mean, does it need to go on a closed session? I don't.
I think it does. I, the other piece about it is um there's a second item to go in a closed session and talk about the contract with the decreed easels and whether the village is going to continue to provide good service from now for assess their services in the new year. Um so I guess what the level for is approval to go on a closed session to discuss the approval status.
That's the board's thoughts. Do we go ahead and close session on both these?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So Frank, you're okay with it? Man, you're okay with it? Okay, so this is an order decided that going into closed session to discuss contracts, contract renewal is appropriate. So I guess that ends our new business. Next up.
I mean, you need, you need a, you need a, so whatever be the motion that.
You know, can we get through thirteen and fourteen or do we have to do that first? Because open discussion and consideration, right? So we discussed it. We said we can go on a closed or we should go on a closed session. So that item is now closed. Open discussion and consideration, right? So we discussed it. We said we can go on a cloud or we should go on a closed session, so that item is now closed. Right? So then we have thirteen, fourteen, and then fifteen is closed session.
They have to make a motion to go on the close session.
Yes, yeah, we will, you know.
Yeah, you can read, you can do thirty and fourteen.
Okay. Uh, sorry, I would shut up. All right, so thirteen future uh agenda items. Looks like we've cleared the deck. So is there any? Future agenda items? Trustee Lancaster.
Um, for your email, I know you're working on it, but just for the public's. Um, knowledge. I would like to add a future agenda of discussed scooters. Any advice? Or can I add something other word looking at that?
Trustee Baldwin.
Mine was for future meetings.
Yes, do you have a future meeting?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, future, number fourteen.
Any other future agenda items? If not, then we go to.
Tell you someone to second me on it. For our policies.
I'll I'll second that.
So we have a um. Future agenda agenda item to talk about lots of scooters by trustee Lancaster and. Uh, it's been seconded by. Trustee Van Happy for a future agenda. Next up is item fourteen, future meeting dates. Trustee Baldwin.
Yes, um, I believe we have the September ninth, yes. Yes, who does that? I was that, sorry, yes, September ninth at six P M is the ethics training. We're also gonna have two agenda items related to the fire station for awarding the fire protection bid. And awarding a third-party inspection service.
Can you put your mic down so that I can start to feel the record?
We also have two items at that September ninth meeting. Uh, besides the app, it's training by segment, we're gonna be awarding a fire protection bid that opened this today for the fire station. And then a third-party inspection bid for a inspector to come in and test the steel and do whatever else has to happen. Out there as part of that project. So um I'll be bringing those two documents forward at this time.
So our September ninth meeting is ethics training that Chad has set up for um the staff and the board to do together so that. Uh. We are in compliance with all the state uh. Uh, ethics laws, so um, Des, thank you for bringing that up, so.
And I have them.
Yes, well.
November eleventh, I don't know if anybody else is aware of the Veterans Day. But I think we should probably add that on to the meeting, future meetings.
We can, um, I know there's gonna be some more meetings for uh. The budget, right?
Yeah, so Nov- November eleventh would be the budget adaption night, um, because obviously to stay on track with getting everything to the county. We would have to approve the budget. That's how the timeline is November eleventh. Now, we don't have a time set, so I don't know when, I don't recall any more time, but.
It was from uh, it was done by six. I think it started from, I think it's four, four to six or four or six, maybe what I rest, something like that.
Okay, so we, if, I mean, we have to adjust the timeline, which we can obviously do, do approve the budget, but we'd have to keep the budget on the eleventh to stay on track. And that's when it's planned to, right?
So let's make sure we have that identified for future meetings.
For next. And then also I wanted to point out, obviously, on September thirtieth, um, that is one of our budget workshops, so that might have to be discussed as to what time we wanted to have a budget workshop. If we wanted to do that at like five o'clock or what time since that's on the same day as four P M.
Well, we just found out that we just had a forty-five minute session that was cut short because I know there was a lot of things that people wanted to talk about, so. Um, I don't know, what does the rest of the board members feel? Trustee Lancaster.
Maybe it is really four forty-five.
Um, I'm gonna be.
Trustee Happy.
I'm gonna be going on September thirtieth. I'm gonna be. Las Vegas or packaging next one. Work.
Okay. I'll happy. So I'm an excused person for the next time. What about?
Okay, okay.
What do you think?
Four forty-five?
Yeah. An hour or more would be.
And like I said, on the agenda, if September thirtieth is not enough time, we do have one slot for October seventh, where we could finish conversations if need be. And we still stay on schedule, so we can plan for that. If we need more time, we could also have an October seventh meeting to finish up discussions.
My only ask is is that if we do this, let's make sure that we're trusted and we 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 get through everything in the time that's. That's slotted.
So we'll plan for four forty-five then for the start of the budgeting.
Mr. President.
Yes, soon, yes.
Can we walk away uh to work down here and you put attention behind it or something just? For all of our calendars, so we can make sure that we color up on our calendars that we know what's possible for the public, that they know what they've said, they want to come to some, thank you.
Okay, any other future meetings? We all said there. Steph.
Yep.
Okay, next up we have. Item thirteen, we just closed session.
We have motion.
We need to read for.
Yeah.
So the board may convene in closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin statute section nineteen point eight five one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating contract terms. Wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session specifically to discuss strategy and bargaining authority. To be used by the village manager in negotiations about a contract extension with River Search Football Club and accurate appraisals.
The attendees uh may include the board, village manager, finance director, village clerk, and your new attorney.
I would ask if you can have the operations manager so that Jeff could participate in the first few.
Okay, we'll also add the uh D N W. Uh, it's a. Full session. Looking for a motion.
Can I make a motion to go into full session?
I'll say.
So I have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Deal to go into closed session. Uh, this will be a roll call or explosion.
Hi.
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 I'm tired.
I.
All right, so the motion to go on a closed session passes unanimously. So thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you.
I'm assuming that's a short break.
Yeah, we're on a short break. I have a.